Go ahead and get started, uh, we'll start with a prayer of Reverend Reed, all about a pledge.
Let's pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and glory, ever and ever. Now, Father, as we stand tonight, we're once again asking and seeking you for your wisdom and your knowledge and your understanding, that you would empower and endow this council and this administration, Father, to run this city and according to your divine will and according to your purposes that you've set forth long ago. So, Father, we're open to receive that, and we're asking that you would continue to bless us as a city and our citizenry, in the name of your son, Jesus, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the April, uh, second twenty twenty-four Bay St. Louis City Council Meeting. Um, any amendment, agenda amendments needed?
That's been recent, sent one out, but did it make it on here?
What was that on?
About the trucks.
The trucks, two trucks, we approved two trucks to be purchased last meeting.
Okay.
From Fastenal, and need to see about if we can give, we didn't, we didn't have on there the right to for the check, so this is just adding. Up to thirty-seven thousand something, I think it is.
Thirty-seven thousand thirty dollars.
We can add that to the.
So, is this on the, not on the agenda?
Not, he has it to be added.
Thought it was added, but evidently not.
So, did he send an email out on this?
Yeah.
At four eleven, okay.
Yeah, they, they come through. We approved them last meeting, we just didn't approve the checks, the right check.
Utility operating capital.
Okay, cool, alright.
It's coming out of what?
Utility operating capital.
Cap.
Okay, so you'll be utility trucks.
Yes.
And that's gonna be under consent?
Yeah, and not to exceed his thirty-seven thousand thirty dollars.
We can just do that one separate.
Okay.
All added to the consent.
Alright, yeah, just remind me when we get there to, not blow by it. Alright, first thing on agenda, guest arts live and Arts Hancock County Committee. Come up and.
Um, Amy Curtis, and as I've seen before, um, for different reasons, but, um, and that's still in the works, we can get some good progress done. But, um, this is about arts alive coming up, I'm on board with, uh, Arts Hancock, and Amy's here for the whole support. And I'm supposed to be here with the people numbers guy, but I'm also, as you know, a full-time artist, and that's what I do here, I've been in, this is my twentieth year this year, doing full-time art. And, um, with that comes, uh, a need for artists to have access to things like arts alive and support like Hancock Arts gives us. Um, also, with that, I've learned as a board member, it takes a lot of money to do these things on. Now, I know that everybody's cash strapped right now, and I know the city is no different, but we're asking if you can look at the fees for the community center and give us some grace on some of it, all of it would be great, but at least part of it, because, um, with this, it's, it's not just the girl that's intense to have an art festival, it's all about the community. And we have, we have about forty vendors so far that are going to be displaying their wares, um, one of them. Um, but we also have twenty-four, those artists are gonna be doing hands-on demos for the community. And this is, um, you know, anybody can come in, and then we always have a lot of children and families that come in to participate in these, um, a lot of these, um, demos are hands-on, kids can get their fingers in there. And so, it's really a community service as well, um, and also, uh, me and my feeds, we bring in sales tax for this. And this year, not only is it one day, it's two days, plus we have a patron party, party night, so we're really expanding it. And so, I'm speaking from the board's side, but also as an artist, a full-time, this is my career, this is how I buy my groceries. So, that anything we could do to help waive some of these fees would be very helpful. Um, also, I'm gonna tell you, just going forward, uh, I used to be a full-time public art teacher in public schools. And so, I know how important it is to have events like this to let students come out and even have a sit in an area where they can show their artwork and get that feel of what it feels like. But we're also gonna be starting a scholarship for our high school students going into college. So, all of this money that we're trying to acquire and to one of our big fundraisers, there's so many things that go into that that help the artists in our next generation of art. So, that, that's basically it, um, I do wanna say, you know, it's, it's becoming a destination point, obviously, Bay St. Louis. It just seems that Newsweek, uh, in February listed Bay St. Louis as one of the top ten little towns in all the United States for the best art vibe, art life. So, with that being said, that's a big feather in our cap, we want that to keep going on, we want everybody to see us as the safe version that we want to go to, right? But we do need some kind of grace on these fees, these are hard for us, and we have other things we just need to get to, you know, we're always trying to help promote our area artists. So, and don't forget, we do have sales tax coming in, I think last year, we've had about two thousand dollars in sales tax come in, but we have twice the vendors this time and twice the days to sell. So, that'll be some offset. Any questions?
What, what are you asking?
So, what?
Asking because the community center, we rent out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I believe we have it in, we have it in for eighteen hundred per day, and we would love at least one of those days to be waived if possible.
It's only rented for one day, according to our sheet, it's only for the thirteenth.
We have it for thirteen, thirteen, fourteen.
It's only on, it's only on the sheet for the thirteenth.
So, thirteen.
It is updated to two days there.
Well, I was wondering if it's broken up one day at the depot and one day at the community center, but yeah.
The depot, the depot is.
Both days?
Yeah, it's same thing, depot is three days, Friday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. For the depot grounds.
Cause it, it was only.
Community hall itself, they, they, they need it for two days.
Yeah, because we expanded it, and everybody was very much important, especially the artists, because doing a one-day show as an artist, that's tough, cause it's, you know, I mean, you're like moving a village to move in, set up for one day, and then break it down, especially when you can get some momentum going, it's just better for us to have a two-day show, because a lot of the, our blood, sweat and tears as an artist goes into getting that set up, getting it stabilized, meeting all the requirements, so the two-day is definitely a perk.
So, we, Mayor, you got the, so the two days of community center, and then you also have the depot rental fees too, correct?
Yeah, and I think that would come out, depot fees for three days, I think it's six hundred dollars, two hundred dollars a day.
Yeah.
And then this, and then we're able to allow them to go in like everyone else on a Friday to get set up.
Right.
That afternoon in the deep, in the community center, because no one has it, you know, rented it off, so.
So, we usually, on Friday and Saturdays, it's eighteen hundred dollars, right?
Right.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Sundays also?
Correct.
Well, yeah, we're adding this, we're adding Sunday.
Okay, and there's nobody.
They want to be basically, I understand was they would pay one day at the, the community centers for eighteen hundred.
Mm-hmm.
And then possibly some for the depot grounds, um, if not all, but, uh, at least waive the one day, the second day at the, at the community center. So, you know, if we could say maybe you do, um, let's say you do eighteen hundred, and then two days at the depot grounds, four hundred, and then we waive, one day at the community center, one day at the depot grounds, which would be, say, Friday night.
Could y'all live with that?
Waving that one day on depot ground, really wouldn't be anything.
Cause it's Friday night, and they're gonna be there setting up anyway.
And they, you know, they can do a little patron party, it's nothing big and everything, so, I mean, that's just more or less, again, setting up there as well.
Yeah.
Like, you know, it's available, and they can go in and set up.
So, they're total twenty-two hundred dollars for what y'all would pay, and then the city would do an in-kind donation as a sponsor for two thousand.
I mean, if nobody's got it at Sunday, I don't.
Yeah, and we're just gonna, we need to book it for Sunday, I got the updated sheet here. It's only one day. No, ma'am, it's somebody, it's, our sheet's not updated, it's only got one day, the thirteenth, and that's why I was confused.
When did she upgrade it, Doug?
Huh?
When is that upgraded?
I can, let me pull it up.
Always looking at the book before I came up here earlier, at four o'clock.
Just, just if I can speak, you know, we get, it undoubtedly gonna be a great event, um, you know, we do get a lot of nonprofits that come and, and ask for a decrease or waiving the fee, and it's hard to, you know, it's, when, when you do one for all, you got, you know, one for one, you gotta do for all, so it's hard to differentiate that. So, being consistent, I, I get what y'all are saying, we also, I mean, I was looking at the vendors, it looks like y'all done really well, getting vendors, I mean, it's the patron parties, fifty dollars a ticket, you've got, um, five hundred dollars, then you have vendors, you have food trucks that are sold at a thousand dollars, I think. The food trucks, but for the patrons, so my concern is that we do have, I mean, I get the taxes it brings in.
We have like oodles of patrons, I mean, it's, it's not like a backyard party, it's not like we're gonna have fifty dollars for tons of hundreds.
Yeah, but, but we've got, I know it does bring in tax revenue, we also have restaurants right across from it that also bring in tax revenue, so giving, giving a decrease to this event seems like to them. I just don't think that it's a fair thing for, for us to do personally for, you know, for this group.
I can understand that, but I do want y'all to keep in mind, the monies we pull in, they're gonna be distributed back into the community. You know, it's, it's not like we're holding on this and just so we can put a free courtyard up, these monies, especially going forward with, um, hopeful scholarships, that won't just be a, a, a one-hit wonder, it's gonna be a scholarship fund for our area students, because I went to school in art, I can tell you how expensive that is, and to have a scholarship that a student can know, I can actually buy my art supplies and not break the bank, that's a huge thing. So, the monies we pull in, yes, that's great, but those monies are immediately fed back out into the community and to support our artists and our, for our next generation of artists.
Well, I, I would, uh, I mean, most people come in and ask us to waive everything, and seeing that you all are paying, uh, for a night and paying, uh, for two days for the, uh, depot grounds, I, I don't have a problem with waiving the other night, uh, because, um, you all are paying something, you're not asking us to waive everything.
Well, and they're also bringing in sales tax, where a lot of these events that ask us to waive everything are just strict, straight fundraisers for them, and they're not bringing anything back to the city, other than community involvement in, in certain development, but, um, this is not just a straight fundraiser, this brings in sales tax to the city, it'll bring in a lot of outside people that are coming to this event a, and to, you know, enjoy the depot, get to see what's in the depot, what's there on a regular basis, and bring new people to our areas, um, along with the sales tax that comes in.
And I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't disagree with that, but also look at the restaurants right across the street, they do the same thing, they bring in sales tax. So, where's their break, you know, I mean, so, again, we're almost bringing in competition to them with the.
We actually work closely with them.
Do they have food trucks that will be there representing those restaurants?
Like, sometimes they put their own, because usually there's so much overflow of people, it's not like the food truck, it's, and the rest instead.
Amy, you might be able to answer this too, or, or, I believe they're not bringing anything that's gonna sell what is sold across the street. I think this is different, I think one of them is, um, the ice cream, the pops, yeah, you know, that, um, I think one's a barbecue, is, is what I think Nancy had said. I don't think it's gonna be direct competition with what is sold, and I do understand, you know, it's competition no matter what you bring, but still, you know, with, with the amount of people gonna be there, I don't think the restaurant is enough, is big enough to handle it, as well as the few food trucks that's coming, it's gonna be on hand.
I think the whole area is gonna be changed, the turnout, and the, and, and just the people and the, and the whole families that show up, and so, um, you know, I'm giving you my best pitch and what's in my heart, it would help us turn this around. And to be honest, that one is gonna turn around, that we can stay and go to something else that's gonna help the community out, help our students out, so it's, it's, it's a win-win.
Yeah, so really, I, I can't find, didn't we update the rate sheet like within last year?
Yes.
Yeah.
Monday through Thursdays, nonprofits is decreased.
Right, yeah, so Sunday through Thursday.
Monday.
Monday through Thursday.
Where's that, where's that sheet at, it's not in the minutes, I can't find it, I Googled my, I searched my minutes, I searched my computer, and I don't have it, I.
It came out in October, we'd have to look at.
Twenty-twenty's the last one I got, and I don't, I can't find it in the minutes or nowhere.
Okay, we'll get that, but we do have it where it was updated with the new price and everything.
Well, that's what I thought, because it was seventeen sixty.
It's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, cause we're.
Well, I know, and that's why I, I, I made a note, cause I don't have an updated fee schedule, and I knew, I thought we did it, but I, actually, I, I looked, I searched the minutes for rate, rental fees, and there's nothing in the minutes.
Um, we can get on.
So, I'm, I know we did it, I just, cause I was trying to find the damn thing, I figured I'd make heads or tails out what we got here.
So, this is back in September, uh, twenty-two.
Okay.
So, we got the old rates, community hall, old rates seventeen sixty.
Okay, yep.
Community hall, new rates eighteen hundred, nonprofit rates eighteen hundred, but then we went to, um, it's like Friday, or Sunday through Thursday, there's a decrease.
Well, that's what I said, Sunday through Thursday's eight eighty.
So, we're looking at.
For nonprofits, or six, yeah, eight eighty for nonprofits, Sunday through Thursday. Seventeen sixty.
So.
Was the old rate.
Nonprofits.
Entire building.
It was at one time, I think.
The ballroom is twelve-ten, the whole building is seventeen sixty, so, yeah, we have three ballroom, entire building, ballroom, meeting room, and hourly rate.
So, it's nine hundred, Monday through Thursday, community hall, eighteen hundred Friday, Saturday, Sunday, those are based on the.
Okay, cool, alright.
So, how many days are we talking about, just two?
The community centers, uh, Saturday and Sunday, but we do come in Friday evening to set up, so follow through.
So, I would be okay that if you charge them the full price the first day and then the half price on the second day, and, cause your expenses are still gonna be the same, and you're still gonna have to go in and clean up, and whatever it is, we're, we're prepping for the day, the day after.
Could we get that, could we get some of the, the grounds, the, the money?
I was talking about the whole thing, the second day at half price.
So, so Gary, what you're saying is, uh, eighteen hundred, uh, plus nine hundred, you're talking about twenty-seven hundred versus twenty-two hundred.
That's just for the community hall, they're also doing the. Yeah, I think that would be fair, I mean, and, uh, cause they're gonna get it Friday night, so we can't rent it Friday, so it's, you know, you're basically getting a, a day and a half for free, so.
Only reason they got it for Friday night is because no one took it, if someone took it, then they wouldn't be able to get into Saturday morning.
Yeah.
That's what we use.
I just did.
I mean, I think if they pay for two days for the grounds and one day for the, for the building, I think that's, you know, that's twenty-two hundred, I think that's a pretty good, good pop for the city.
So, um.
That was Mr. Reed said.
And we are gonna bring in more than twenty for sales tax, I mean, that we always bring in, so I just have to reiterate that, that is, that's, that's a purpose in the, in the county. But just, just being, you know, this is one of those things, if we can get help from y'all to, to, to make it the best we can financially, this is one of those things, and it just builds momentum. Bay St. Louis already has the, the vote that we're one of the top ten cool art cities, but we just need, this is, this is our, one of our heartbeats here, that we need this, we need help here. Because, you know, this is one of the big faces of Bay St. Louis, is the art, it brings in revenue all year long.
Mr. Shear, I'd like to make a motion, if you're ready, we have more discussions. So, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, um, give the Hancock County Arts Committee and Arts Alive, the Depot Grounds for Friday, Saturday, Sunday, at a price of four hundred, which is waiving, uh, two hundred dollar fee for Friday evening, and give the Arts Live and Hancock County Arts Committee, um, the use of the community center on Saturday at a rate of eighteen hundred, which is the normal rate, and waive the rate for Sunday, but they are welcome to use it Sunday as well, so. Total of two thousand two hundred dollars, eighteen hundred plus the four hundred for the grounds, and we're waiving two thousand, which, um, we would like to ask that the city be listed as a sponsor, as an in-kind donation.
Alright, motion, Mr. Hoffman.
Sure.
Second, Mr. Reed, any more discussion? Put the motion.
Aye.
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 Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye, motion passes five-two.
Nine o'clock.
Don't be late, you promise. Nine oh one and two, deal's gone.
So, there's, so there are deposits on the buildings, right, so you're required to clean up, um, depot grounds and the buildings.
And we, we have the city logo in my red, before we had to put them on our sign, because everybody's seen us, it's, it's, I was in my, how's these couples on?
Big. Well, what's a two thousand dollars, what's a two thousand sponsorship? You gotta, I mean, you have a, you have a, you have different sponsorships levels, I think five, five thousand's your premium, so whatever the two thousand's sponsorship level should be.
Thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
I said, I looked, I knew we did it, but I just, I didn't find it, didn't think. Alright, next thing's the mayor's report.
I'm good.
Council business, Mr. Hoffman.
Um, nothing tonight.
Reed?
Uh, I talked to the mayor and, and about the splash pad, and we got that open, um, what else did I mention?
Um, sidewalks.
Sidewalks, uh, I guess, Jason, you're gonna give a report tonight, uh, okay, I'll wait till, basically, that's all.
Is the, uh, splash pad, um, on, 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 open?
Open it before Easter.
Okay.
I'm good, thanks, sir.
Now, I just wanna mention, um, Mayor, I know we ran into, I think I brought it up a couple weeks ago, on the corner of Bay Oaks and Central, I think, so our crew took care of that, the ditch was clogged, it wasn't draining. Um, then, I think part of the issue was that, um, Conrad, which I think there's been some, it, it'll, it's a little ambiguous, I, I think it's always been wavelength, saying, no, that's part of the ditches for the bay, the bay's saying it's wavelength, we were able to get some clarity on that, I think, Mayor Chapanny said they'll go ahead and get that cleared out, so that, that, that way that water can flow, so if we can just follow up and see on that one, um, but it does sound like there was resolution, they said that does fall in the Ketchman area wavelength and get that cleaned out, that way we can start.
I think we got the first few hundred feet, then the rest of it turns into wavelength.
Right.
Somewhere, where, you know where Dwayne lives right there?
Yeah.
His backyard.
Right.
Somewhere is in his backyard is our property line.
It's almost like the wavelength, that, that area, Blue Heron, they drain into the wavelength side, so then, so I think they're gonna handle that.
Okay.
We can just check on that, that's all I've got.
Okay. Sir Hoffman?
Bye.
No block?
Uh, streetlights on six oh three.
Yeah.
I was, I saw they knock one down yesterday, driving by, and, uh, man, we got eighteen missing streetlights on six oh three, have we ever replaced any of them?
We replaced a couple of them, and we're in the process now, we just put a couple on ninety back, and we're looking at getting prices and getting the right fit, we have bits and pieces of a bunch of them, but we need arms, we need.
Saw an arm missing over there, closer to.
And so, and so, that Gerani and them's in the price side.
I found an arm, that, on the one that fell yesterday.
You know, so they're in the process of getting it, and where we can start getting those put back, he's got prices on the install form and everything, but it's just getting everything pieced together with all our separate pieces.
So, how many you think you have, uh, go back up?
I, I would probably say he's got more than half of them to go back up, and then the price for, I, I, don't, don't hold me, but it's for a new pole, everything's probably around six thousand in that day.
Oh, I know, it's, it's.
Six, eight thousand, so, we're, uh, yeah, he, he's moving on that, and again, I think you look on ninety, he replaced three or four of those, so. Soon as we get that, they're going up, yeah, it seems like, I don't know what it is, this was in.
This one looked like they would do.
This middle of, well, not middle of afternoon, late afternoon yesterday, and took out one.
Yeah, I saw, I mean, it was just, I was driving by right after it happened, and I was like, God, Lord, look at this.
He did have insurance.
Well, it looked like that was a nice car, so.
He, he did have insurance.
Now, I don't think they were hurt, were they?
No, I don't think.
There was a wreck right the other week before in front of the nursery too, same spot.
Right. Alright, um, more council business? Alright, public forum, Michael Reeves, Court Street Community Center.
This is a short introduction, it's, um, when we, uh, we're first discussing this project, uh, to identify what the issues are that need to be done for repairs, of course, Street, uh, Community Center, I'm actually just reassigned up there, and I had previously reviewed the existing drawings, and of course, those are a number of buttons that could be of issue, and he and I walked around a little bit, and he mentioned that he was concerned about some of the handrails potentially, uh, having rough issues, that if somebody were leaning against them, uh, they could theoretically fall over, and that's what, uh, commentated by one of the, uh, art, art, architects, U L art, art, architects, in the program phase earlier in the year, and of course, there are a lot of tripping hazards with the, with that and so forth, but that's just background information on it. I, uh, noticed one day, a Facebook posting of a lady requesting a DJ for, uh, then on June eighth at the community center, and, uh, I wrote back to her, you know, in, you know, review of these, this project going underway, to repair these issues, that there might be some issues with, you know, handrails and so forth like that, and to check into it, and then, so she checked into it and got the words back, something like, well, it wasn't rented, and I think Mike made a comment or two, that, well, in fact, it is being rented to, and I just wanted to clarify, that, you know, I wasn't attempting to, to.
We, we have not rented anything new, if we had to cancel, we did cancel some, expectation was that this was gonna be done already, and, and we're meeting again for this, but since then, inside work has been done, that cables have, is an ongoing thing since day one, people staying on the cables and the eye bone comes loose, all cables are hooked back up. Another problem since day one has also been, uh, the boards popping up, and if you go up there and look, some of them boards got a hundred screws been screwed in the end of it, that's been a problem since day one, all boards as of now are screwed down, and, and they went up there and took care of that, that's part of, those are two parts of the fix we, we're looking at when it comes, you know, replace the boards with possibility of concrete and everything, if that's an alternative, or go in and replace the runners that the boards are screwed down, and then put new boards in, you know, so there's gonna be some questions there, what's done, but the handrails, as far as, you know, we went up there months and months ago, sat there and shook every handrail, two people shaking handrails, they're not going anywhere, anybody can climb over the handrails and fall off if that's what they choose, but they're not gonna fit in between, they're four inches apart or less, just like they're supposed to be and everything, and stairs, yes, they rusty and all, and, and ugly coming up, but they're structurally sound, and that's part of the fix too, whether we're gonna replace stairs with aluminum, or new stairs, or just paint and all, that, that's gonna go on with that, but we haven't taken anything new, but whatever was out there, we got a wedding coming up in, I think, in a couple weeks, I think, and there's still a go, and in this event here, was, was still a go, yeah.
That, that, that they didn't want to rent it, and they might have stopped some of the running things, and just on the side, in reviewing the initial program of work to be done, there were items on that list that I think could potentially cause more problems, and there were items not on the list, which the whole thing covered, so, getting back to the question, you were asking, you know, uh, who reviews, the review, you know, the review of the work, you know, uh, I was almost gonna suggest that, you know, somebody like myself, an architect, could work with the city people who look at these plans, to see that the plans are actually helping all the plans that need to be done. Because I said there were items that I saw, um, that were on their programs, that, you know, that maybe makes sense to. Because there were items that I saw, um, that were on their programs, that, you know, that maybe makes sense to have something that they're looking at.
Well, they do, the ones we chose are architects and engineers. I understand fully what they're doing, and I think Jason has been involved in, he understands, Ronnie understands, and it comes from the council as well. Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Alright. Yep, thank you, right? Yes, sir. Social media is the devil. Yep, alright, Cliff? C J, right by there. There was, he gone.
They left?
He gone. No mic drop?
Yeah, don't come over if you don't use the mic.
Give him that, or he's gonna start dancing.
Click your mobile now, you can walk around.
Good evening, gentlemen, first off, I wanna tell you how much I appreciate what y'all do, I've said it before and I'll say it again, I don't have the tact of deflueny to do what y'all do. Thank you, that being said, uh, in case some of you don't know, I know Kyle knows, but there are a number of citizens who have been served petition. And they are starting to go to the Chancery Court and file their objections, I do, I'm not privy to what y'all have, that's, that's, the city's gotta answer that. Uh, I will say this, in all these years with P and Z, there've been a number of requests for variances that met none of the requirements for variance. Yet, our criteria has been consistent, we have set a legal precedence that it is consistent with the area. If you look from Saint Charles Street to the city line, the exceptions are Ramonita Street, Bay Oaks, that is what you would refer to in Pasca Shan as the estate district. The big lots with typically big houses. I would ask you gentlemen to think about our legal precedence, and is this consistent with the area when you develop whatever answer you give to this? Because we can't go out there and make fifty foot lots and dig up the swamp and make waterfront property again like they did back in the nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties. There's things that were done years ago that we don't do now, so, I would ask that you take a fairly aggressive approach to a, that is a serious side of town, where we got big lots, big houses. We have a few streets and suburbs, and by and large, between me and my neighbor, I got one house, we have seven acres, that's more typical of that area. Thank you, gentlemen.
And that's a good point, but mayor, do we know has the city been served yet on the petition? All the easiest ones to find, I guess, Monday through Friday, nine to five.
I know, right?
They locked out and got me, we're not home, but they got us Saturday, right before Easter.
It was served by that.
Have you, have you been served, Kyle?
Yeah, they did serve the bros who were two doors down from me, and the Hans who were next door, uh, Brian's, uh, on the corner, I think they mailed it to him in, in Atlanta.
Yeah, and it brings.
It has not been published in the paper yet.
And it brings up a good point, I know we're, you know, under the city clerk's report, I think we're looking at a, a new zoning ordinance, or, you know, the, uh, proposal for it, and it'd be interesting if that, it is touched upon. I don't, I don't wanna jump ahead, Councilman Seal, but, um, you know, if that is touched, and I think a good point in that, oh, that area is predominantly estate lots. Pasca Shan does have an estate lot, similar to an R four we have, but it, it's even larger, uh, I think parameters for that, but I don't know if that's gonna be touched upon or not, in the new zoning ordinance.
Definitely be looked at, you know.
Well, we'll get to that whenever that comes up in the city clerk's report, but I think that's a very valid point, Mr. Cliff.
And that, that's some of the feedback, as, as, uh, so like I said last time, Mike, I apologize, I heard the feelings last time, but I think you guys deserve to get some feedback. Cause a lot of people don't have the nerve to stand up here and talk. They'll come and talk to me, but I'm kinda shy, as y'all know. Thank you, gentlemen.
Semi-reserved.
I must've missed that.
Semi-reserved.
Oh, I gotta leave it for Jason?
He used to be a hard charger when he was in the plant, he slowed down a lot.
Yeah, I have, believe me.
People are no longer speed bumps.
Yeah.
Alright, project updates, Mr. Jason's doing project updates, FEMA project updates, I should say, is that what you're?
Yeah, I think that's what we'll discuss tonight, uh, of course, if you have any other questions about any projects, I can address those as well. You know, we've been working with FEMA on two projects, uh, out of road repairs, which are, are in Ward six, um, and then harbor repairs, um, from Zeta. So, uh, two separate FEMA disasters, and that kinda complicates the issue as well, but, um, they've asked a couple of questions, we, we took bids on the out of roads. I believe we took those in September of last year, uh, we know they came in much higher than FEMA's estimate, we did get two bids on that project. They were about, I think, three and a half million, if I recall.
Wasn't that almost doubled in what the FEMA?
It's pretty much double what FEMA's cost estimate was, right? And then on the harbor repairs, um, we took those bids, and, um, I think those were in November. Only got one bid on that one, same thing bid was probably three times as much as what FEMA had estimated, so, um, they'd sent a couple of RFIs, requests for information to us, we've addressed all those questions. Uh, we're just kinda waiting on FEMA to, uh, to give us the authorization to award those projects. Thankfully, both contractors, they've been, um, agreeable to keeping their bids, uh, for so long. We did have, uh, for one of the projects, I think the out of roads, we had in there for them to hold their bids for ninety days. I think on the Zeta repairs, the harbor, we changed that to a hundred twenty days, both of those have long since expired, so, um, we do touch base with them every couple of weeks, just to be sure that they're still good with their bids, um, and so far, they have been. Um, but, you know, we've, we've met a couple of times with the administration, uh, with DCMC, you know, with our FEMA folks, to try to figure out what's the best way to move forward with this, so, um, you know, I think tonight, I don't know, mayor, is there any other update that you wanna give them on, on funding for some of these projects?
No, you know, we, we looked, we talked about, you know, possibility of granting anticipation loan for each of them individually, that way it would be directly for that project, and that project only. And then whenever we get reimbursed, we would just pay that loan off and everything, you know, so it's something to look at, and something we need to start discussing, you know, whether we, we have a workshop with it. You know, this, in this week, next week, or whatever, but if we wanna move forward, cause we're looking at tying up a pot between these two, probably pretty close to seven million, seven million dollars. And the way FEMA is, you know, we waited two years for reimbursements before for, you know, debris pickup and all, and we don't have seven million dollars that we can tie up for two years, or, or maybe longer, or whatever, you know? So it's something to think about, you know, I think we started putting some numbers together, you know, looking at the grant, a grant anticipation loan, and then, you know, when we talked, we talked about doing one loan, and we said, well, you know, if we do one, might, just, let's just do them individually. That way, they each offer that particular project, and that project only can't be used, you know, cross mingle the funds, or anything like that. And then when we get full reimbursements, whatever, we would pay off that, and then all we would have is whatever our match would be.
Would, is there a, is there a cap in terms of, I mean, you just mentioned it took two years to get FEMA reimbursement in other areas, I mean, all those grant anticipation loans, is there a cap on how long? Cause we're gonna compound the interest, I'm assuming, for however long.
We would, yeah.
So, is there a negotiation ability on that, or is there?
As, as far as with, with the loan itself goes?
Yeah, I mean, cause it's, we could go two years without getting reimbursed, and it's just gonna keep compounding.
Yeah.
It'd be longer.
Maybe longer.
Yeah, um, we can, we can talk about that, um.
So this, but, but, so the loan would be for the out of repairs, the general harbor damage?
Zeta, Ida.
So the, so there's, so what I got, the, the four FEMA projects, with the harbor electrical repairs, Zeta, that's done?
Yeah.
Okay, um, Hurricane Ida repairs, which is the street, come at three point five million, Harbor General Damage Zeta, uh, FEMA project, um, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's a south wall?
It just says Harbor, it's, it's a rezo's list.
Yeah, that's the, the remaining repairs to the harbor.
Again, and Harbor dredging.
Dredging is separate.
Harbor dredging is separate, that's a different, so those are the four FEMA projects that was on rezo's project list, so.
Correct.
Seven million dollars, that's three point five million for the, the streets, the roads, and then the other two da, har- harbor dredging and general damages, will, will be three point five million as well?
Well, the, the dredging, we have not bid yet, we're working with the county on accepting the material to be placed on the beach south of the tracks, uh, before we can bid that out. So we don't, we don't have any cost on that, we have discussed that project several times with FEMA, I think their cost estimate is low, they've only allocated about three or four hundred thousand dollars to dredge that material, I think we're gonna be higher than that. So, we're still going back and forth with them on, uh, on, on the dredging project, but the wa- the wall repairs, the fishing pier repairs, all the other general repairs inside the harbor, uh, that bill was about three and a half million.
And those spoils can be used to refill the wall on the south wa- on the west wall, correct?
Wait, what now?
South of the harbor.
Correct.
Yes, that's the plan, that's what we've asked the county to accept the dredge material.
Alright, so the Zeta repair, general damage repairs went from one million to three point five million?
Yes, sir.
That's what I meant, it's what's on original rezo's list?
Yes.
Does that include the, the west wall with the event deck?
No.
So, you need?
This should just be the south wall, where the.
So how much do you need total for the harbor now?
For the harbor, three and a half, just for the general repairs, we haven't bid the dredging yet, so I'm not sure what we'll need for that.
And then the bid we got the other day was two point, one point five.
That's not FEMA related, that's totally separate.
So, what's the total that you need for the harbor, Jason? So you're talking actual cost of what you think is gonna need to fix the harbor? Which is?
Three and a half million for the general repairs, probably about seven hundred thousand for the dredging, and then two million, I think, is what the, uh, wall repairs were estimated to be.
Okay.
Okay.
Almost six million then? Roughly six million.
Alright, um, also, we gotta look at the local match on that as well, we gotta figure out what the, it's five percent?
Yeah, that's right.
Five percent on, I mean, I've tried to figure out.
It's five percent now.
Okay, five percent, that's what I've tried to figure out here.
Ninety percent federal funds, five percent state, five percent.
Okay, so I wish I could update those lists of what really, what we're gonna have to.
But that doesn't apply to the two and a half million, uh, Gary, for the wa- for the settlement and the event deck.
Well, that can be added to the lawsuit.
Correct.
Right.
Saying there's no local match, that, that's a hundred percent.
Right.
And they said that would be like a forty year fix?
I think so.
Yeah, they, they think that's a lifetime fix.
The local match on the boss, to the three and a half million for the FEMA's damage, but we're talking about the general repairs.
It would apply to the general repairs and the dredging.
Okay.
Just FEMA picking up ninety percent.
You said about seven hundred thousand for dredging?
About six hundred thousand, yeah.
Something around four, four point one million?
Probably so.
Total.
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand max.
So we're talking a total of, limit over six million dollars to fix the harbor?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Ninety percent of the four million to be reimbursed.
Which the harbor.
If we can get, if we can get four million dollars worth of repairs for two hundred thousand, you know. It's a no brainer, but the rest of it.
Where you gonna get that? You're gonna have to raise taxes.
Two hundred thousand?
Well, you got that and Ida, um, um, the street that he's talking about in Ward six.
Yeah, but that, that's a five percent match as well.
That's a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Plus the interest.
Plus the interest.
Well, the interest is a problem.
What's the interest rate that y'all looking at?
Don't know yet. That's why we wanna start moving on it, to, you know, set up a workshop, you know, get down to start moving and.
Get some numbers, let's, you know, when he gets the numbers, well, we can have, you know, workshop and figure out what we wanna do.
Yeah.
You can do something.
Start eating out a little bit at a time, you know, we just have to push some stuff around, figure out how to keep it solvent.
And, and again, you know, for the roads and all, we, we have funds available for that match and everything as well.
And they're just getting worse now, we don't, we're not quite set up with.
You know, and, and one of the things we tried, and, and Jason tried as well, but in a, you know, to allow us to go in and let us pay them.
Probably be cheaper.
It, it, it's a million dollars cheaper probably, but they won't, they won't do that because it's an improvement, and you gotta start the process all the way over.
Try to make anything better.
I know, that's.
And, and it doesn't make sense, it's a million dollars cheaper for a better product, but they won't do it.
We actually, I mean, on the harbor project, there were a couple items that, you know, we talked about the city paying for on that maintenance ramp, and throughout their review process, FEMA said, well, that becomes an improved project, you can't do that, or now we have to start all over again. So we said, alright, we'll just, we won't do those, just approve what's there, so we can move forward.
And what it was, was under the ramp that goes down to the, to the beach, was just gonna put piling and sheet pile, and just make sure that doesn't get washed out again. Well, that's an improvement, so, you know, we took it out because we didn't wanna start the whole process all over.
I think what's throwing the road project off, they, they added mitigation, hazard mitigation with some, it's called asphalt fabric, geotextile fabric, whatever. Um, and so that, by adding that into the project, that got us over the million dollar, um, large project requirement, so then they pay on actuals. If that wasn't approved, and we did not include that, then it would've been a small project where they just would've paid based off of their, um, FEMA's cost estimate. So, we were really caught, you know, between a rock and a hard place with trying to get that fully funded, um, and not, and include the hazard mitigation, which is what they had.
It could be a better base, I mean.
It will be, it'll be a, it'll be a much better road in the long haul, but it, there's a lot of work that goes into adding that, that pavement fabric.
Probably, the only thing good about it, this is the time of the year to do it, you know, the last, cause it's temperature based, weather based, everything else, so the last four, five months, they couldn't have been working on it anyway.
Yeah, if you remember when we did the DBST first, it's, um, the M dot requirements, you can't, you can't do it between, basically, November and February or March, the temperatures just aren't, they, they won't work out for that.
We start tomorrow. Start tomorrow, yeah.
So, now is a good time to do it, but, um, all the communication we've had with MEMA, um, as they say, as long as we follow the scope of work, uh, which we feel we have, uh, DCMC has reviewed it, they feel we follow the scope of work. Uh, FEMA will, you know, uh, make the adjustment at closeout, um, but.
Who would be the company getting that same company?
Uh, so, the paving was. It's a different, yeah, it was somebody different from, um, I think T L Wallace did the original contract, and I think, uh, McQueen is the low bidder on the repairs, for the roads.
And it was a low, it was a low bid by almost a million, half, quite a bit.
Yeah, the second bidder was about a million dollars more than McQueen.
Alright, so administration's gonna look at, uh, some type of grant anticipation loans, or grant, um, fund loans for each of these projects separately.
Do we have to engage, like, a financial advisor to get them loans? Call Hancock Bank?
Uh, yeah, that, it just blows my mind that a city can't go borrow a million dollars, that, that, it's just ludicrous. We spend fifty thousand dollars in legal fees, a- as an individual, I can go borrow a million dollars.
Hancock Bank.
And we got collateral, we got four hundred and some million dollars in collateral, it's just, yeah, it just blows my mind, we're retiring, we get that law changed. Waste of money. Alright, mayor, we figure out what we need to do?
Yep, bring that back.
Yeah, we'll figure, anyone wants to bring it back, we'll talk about it, then we'll workshop it, um, if we can get these lists updated, a bit closer to, I, I mean, I'm updating mine with three, three point five, but make sure we get all the numbers, local matches, get that upgraded, so we'll understand exactly what, we don't know exactly what it's gonna be, but the new numbers. Right, and then that, that'll roll up and our matching numbers to figure out where we at. Um, and then again, we'll need to, uh, go down this list of projects and.
Um, how's that Sienna Lane coming?
Sienna Lane, uh, it's advertising for bids right now, so April, I think it's April nineteenth, don't hold me to that, but I think it's April nineteenth is when we receive bids on that one.
And how much did the county pledge on that?
Up to two hundred and fifty thousand.
And we got two hundred and fifty thousand match, right?
Fifty fifty.
Okay, yep. Writing more questions, Mr. Jason?
The, uh, sidewalk projects, they went out to bid, bid came back in, where we standing on that one?
Yes, sir, so, um, Washington Street and Buyer Drive, uh, we received bids on those, uh, we are, right now, communicating with M dot on all the bidders' information. So we have to send all that stuff to M dot for them to review, um, the Buyer Drive was, came in higher, so the city center requests to GRPC, the funding agency, to add additional funds to cover, you know, that project. Um, so it's, it's gonna be, I would say, a couple of months before we are able to award those projects.
Hey, patience, brother, patience.
We're gonna hit the ten year anniversary.
Yeah, I know, right, yeah, two years, we'll be ten years into it.
See you in Dunbar Village.
Yeah, I know, right?
Do what?
We can have, we can have wheelchair races down there, we can escape from Dunbar.
Washington came in, uh, below the estimate, and so we've asked GRPC to, to take the savings on that project.
We could have, we could have wheelchair races down there.
Washington came in, uh, below the estimate, and so we've asked GRPC to, to take the savings on that project. Move it over to Buyer Drive and then also allocate some additional funds to Buyer Drive, so, uh, we're just.
Is what it is.
A wait and see.
Alright, what's the status on the well?
The well, the preliminary plans were submitted to Department of Health last week. Um, so there'll probably be a couple of months for them to review that as well, um, and then once we get any kind of feedback or notes or comments back from them. Then we'll address those and be ready to.
And it's still gonna be a forgivable?
That, yes, sir, yeah, that's a hundred percent.
Two point six, the.
And it's, there are some improvements to Harry Street, I mean, it's not just for the well, but their, um, the main thing is gonna be to, to install the new well.
Jason, you know when they're gonna break ground on the pickleball courts?
Those contracts have been submitted, um, the contractor, uh, Moran Halling is working on his bonds and his insurance for all that. Um, once we have all that together, then we'll get that to the administration, they'll get it to the council for approval, and then we can get a notice proceed date for that.
Hopefully within the next thirty days?
I would think so, I would think so.
Hopefully.
Alright.
Jason, I was supposed to stop by and, uh, what they bid on, at, uh, MLK Park? I wanna just see the layout on what they bid on, could you leave it at your front desk?
Can, we have a set of plans there.
Okay. When, when could I pass by?
Whenever you want.
You know, y'all could also.
Noon on Friday, B. What?
We work hard four days a week.
You know, you might even look at, I know you and I were talking, Jeffrey, about putting pickleball courts in the Boys and Girls Club. Cause they have that new gym and everything, and it's just a.
We looked at that. We looked at that.
What'd they say?
Just still looking, you know, about going in and re, re-striping everything.
Yeah, all these places I go to in volleyball tournaments all have the volleyball court and there's a pickleball court in it on top of a ba- a basketball.
But don't they come out of the ceiling though, them courts?
No.
The nets roll around?
No, yeah, the nets, they got holes in the thing and they, they roll, they pull the plug out and set them in there, well, some of them do roll around, yes. Some don't, some have holes where the drills.
We're looking also with this, to re-striping everything back there, and while we're doing that. Move the goals over to, to the center of the area and get it off that wall, I think it's only like a, less than a, maybe a foot.
In that wall?
Foot, two foot, maybe on the whole side. We're looking at moving it over as well, I don't know why it didn't happen when we redid it and everything.
Who, who's looking at, who is it, Jomari?
Brent's been looking at it, talking wrecked the record.
Okay.
Yeah, he's been looking at it and then, um, a few people quiet about it a while back.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, Gary brought it up, uh, to me and, uh, I mean, if we can do that, put it inside. Uh, re-stripe it, I think, uh, served the public real well.
Alright, thank you, Jason.
Alright, thank you.
City Clerk's report, docket of claims, um, we aren't seeing four thousand ninety eight dollars and ninety eight cents. Um, any questions on docket of claims? Motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Salvo?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman, any discussion?
One discussion, so Mike, we got eighteen light poles down and Mississippi Power has a pretty good bill to us every month. Um, are we charged a flat rate if we had all eighteen poles, or do we have, uh, or is it a meter?
Those are our poles and lights.
The lights are metered.
But they're metered.
They're metered?
It's metered, but we don't pay per pole.
No, okay, I just wanna make sure it's metered.
Not like, not like all the lights around town.
Got you.
Alright, any more discussion? Spoke to motion?
Alright.
Alright.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passed seven zero. Alright, motion to approve proposal for Ryan Design writing new zoning ordinance, city based in Louis, amount of one hundred and one thousand five hundred dollars.
I mean.
Um, we've looked at that.
Okay, yeah, um.
I think it's needed, I, I mean, I know we got the Conference of Plan, uh, draft Friday, I'm, I'm, it's a hundred sixty G pages, I'm about eighty pages in. Um, and then I would imagine that's gonna correspond and drive the zoning changes. So, I mean, I think, I, I, obviously Orion's not here to speak to it, so, I mean, I'd like a little bit more time just to understand.
It's still gotta go to P and Z, you know, trying to get it set up where it goes to them. Um, probably in the May meeting, which, that's about how long it's gonna take with the advertisements and everything for that, um. But it's been sent out to everybody, to the, to the committees and all, with everything put back in and all. And then still, you know, to move forward, we still got time to do whatever.
And on that, we don't need to bid that out?
Bid what out?
The hundred and one thousand five hundred.
Zoning ordinance update, yeah, why wouldn't?
Yeah, it's a good bit of money.
Why wouldn't?
Yeah, it's over seventy five thousand. So, I mean, I know they wrote the conference plan, but I think any, I mean, giving an opportunity for anybody to mirror that and then do the zoning, I think we'd have to bid that.
Does it fall to professional services?
At it a hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what I was asking.
Well, just table that.
Yeah. Where, where can we get a copy of this here to see what changes they made to the zoning ordinance?
They're not.
So they haven't done that.
So the comprehensive plan, they will make suggestions.
Okay, so they, they haven't made any changes?
No.
Not the zoning.
They wanted, they want the opportunity to update it.
So our charts are still the same.
Yeah, so the comprehensive, you know, so comprehensive plan is, they wrote it for us, right? We had, we had community input, um, but again, those are some of their ideas, right? So what we do, we need to read it and review it.
Yeah.
And decide if we like their ideas, the Dewanee Group that came in in two thousand and six from California. And did a comprehensive plan and it, uh, it wasn't what we wanted, right? So if they take this and we don't say, no, we don't want that, then they'll write their zoning per what their idea based in Louis is. And we, yeah, we had a co- a group, right, committee, but we're also part of that committee to understand what their proposals are to change part of zoning ordinance. So it hooves us to really dig in here and to understand, like, yeah, we, you know, this is a great idea, no, you know, we don't like that, or ask more questions. Right, um, yeah, comprehensive zoning ordinance probably has some tweaks to it, but, you know, for a hundred thousand dollars, um, yeah. We just need to understand that. And, uh, first of all, find out what, you know, requirement for it to be, you know, RFQs, RFEs, and.
It is a, you know, being a professional service and everything, it doesn't have to be bid out, you know?
So, but, okay, um, we might, yeah, look at that.
So we're gonna just table this then?
Yes.
We might, but if you get on, on listening to the complaints for the last five years.
Well, again, the comprehensive plan drives.
Having enough time, but, I mean, like I said, we just got it Friday, it's a hundred sixty G pages.
Yeah, we need to understand what's in there and what we like or don't like, or, or ask questions, right? Um, yeah, committee and reviews did it, but the group, their group is really the ones that updated the comprehensive plan with our input. Um, so we just need to understand what their changes are and if we agree or not, and if we have some big issues or big gaps, we need to get the, the committee back together. And try to understand what their, their thought process was, thought process was, again, cause Dewanee Group wanted us to have all twenty five foot lots. With houses on top of each other and green space everywhere, uh, walkable cities and like, no, that's really not downtown, you know, filling out what base St. Louis is. Alright, table of that, administration, find out if we need to go back out for, if we need to go out for proposals for the zoning ordinance update. Not to, um, okay, anything else on that? Um, consent agenda?
Uh, can we pull, um, uh, A and B out? I have to have a couple questions on A.
Okay, so remove A from, and we'll vote on it separately?
Yeah, please.
And B also for the carpet?
Yeah, I'm gonna recuse myself on that one.
Okay. Alright, remove A and B from consent agenda, so C through P?
Uh, just a question on item P, this is the usage for the Business Resource Center. Looks like it's been rented sixteen times to have been for profits, but I thought we were doing a hundred bucks an hour, up to three, three hours of three hundred dollars a day. It looks like on three five John McDonald Realty was there from eight AM to twelve PM, but we only, but they only charged, got charged a hundred dollars. It was a hundred dollars for four hours or something.
Yeah, with, I, I don't.
Thought it was a hundred dollars an hour.
I don't remember what the rate was.
Three hundred.
Yeah, we could find out, Mr. Mayor, what that rate was for that.
What, what number is that letter?
The last, it's P.
It's a report from the business.
P, okay, I got you.
What is the, is there an hourly rate? Uh, what is the hourly rate on that?
And I could be misunderstanding, I thought it was a hundred dollars an hour, not to exceed three hundred a day, so.
Okay, yeah, and I, I don't remember that, but honestly.
I thought it was a hundred for four hours, I could be mistaken too, though, but.
Okay, so what question on it, you still wanna leave it on there to vote, or just question, report?
Yeah, I mean, I think we could, if we left it on there, then we'd have to go back and reconcile it once we get the answer, uh.
Well, uh, yeah, it's, I mean, it's just a report from them, so we'll have to understand what they're charging. Alright, so items A and B removed, so C through P, need a motion?
Uh.
That wasn't a motion?
Uh, no, I, I.
I was wondering what you were speaking over that.
You were going to A, I'm sorry, go ahead, it's fine.
I need a motion again?
Swahili.
Motion for consent agenda, item C through P.
Yeah, motion by Mr. Salvo. Second, Mr. Reed, any further discussion, spoke to motion?
Alright, alright.
Alright, got it.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed seven zero, alright, item number A?
Aye.
Um, on Jim's quote, he says, uh, he's not included a payment for a performance bond, is he required to have a performance bond on so, on a small amount like that? So in other words, he's saying that if he's requ- uh, if he has to have a performance bond, he's gonna, it's five percent or more, so it's, he would add that to the top of this price. And then what is tap fees, impact fee or tap fee for air conditioning duck? Cause this is all stuff that's, these are things that, that, that could be added to this bill, this is not a total price.
Then it could be more than the other bidder then.
What, I don't have it with me, um.
His quote. The bottom two on his quote says.
Cause, uh, the other one from, uh, Robbie's AC, they're both wavelength companies, both good companies. But in his bid, he said, he, he says everything that he's doing, which is almost exact what, uh, J E M's doing. I was just curious about if he's required to have a performance bond, because if he does, it's gonna be five percent higher, which is gonna be. Almost another thousand, twelve hundred bucks more, and I'm not sure what the impact or tap fee is.
So both of them would have to have a performance bond though, right?
Yeah.
So they would both go up.
They go up five percent.
Incrementally, but they would both.
Yeah, cause he says it's not in the price.
Right, so they'd both go up the same, so the.
Yeah, usually a, a bond, a performance bond is, is five percent of the job.
Okay.
And that goes to the bonding company, and usually they have that listed.
And I'm, I don't know, I have no idea what a bond, what.
In case they walk off the job.
What is the, the cap, I mean, what is the minimum job, so a hundred dollar job is requires a bond?
It's whatever the city requires, you know.
Uh, got that question in.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what, I've never been asked that, so I don't know what the minimum.
Normally, anything.
Bond for this is not easy.
I think normally, anything over seventy five thousand.
I think it's over that threshold where it's gotta be bid out.
Yeah, then you have to have a performance bond.
Okay, Wes was wondering what that number was.
It's not required in this.
Okay.
And they won't get paid till they finished anyway, thirty days later.
I just don't want them to get one and then, hey, by the way, you owe us five percent.
Okay, alright, so, um, still good, J E M's still the low bidder at twenty two thousand two hundred sixty two dollars and thirteen cents. And then no performance bond, make, please make a note that, Miss Caitlin, no performance bond is required per.
And the tap fee, I'm not sure what that is, so, does the city charge tap fees on itself?
Not on that, no.
I didn't think so.
Alright.
And, and this is also a hard duck, you know, coming in, this is not the, the sock, you know, so.
I asked Reso about that, that, it was.
The duck.
Duck, yeah, he had duck, and I sent him, I said, we getting ducks, he said, I need to ask the mayor and Ronnie about ducks at the community center. Cause they had D U C K on it, said a D U C T. I said, no goofy. Alright, need a motion?
Uh, motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. No Block, uh.
Uh, uh, let me write, read it out, hold on, uh, motion to approve, uh, awarding, uh, the lowest and best quote to J E M LLC. For a new hard HV ducks, ducks at the Court Street Community Center in the amount of twenty two thousand two hundred sixty two dollars. And thirteen cent to be paid out of GCRF grant funds.
Alright, motion, Mr. No Block.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman, vote to motion?
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion passed seven zero, alright, item B, consent agenda, Mr. No Block.
Um, flooring downstairs. On Police Department old side, redoing that. Um, just while we're doing it, doing some more further back in there and get that side finished, then we can move on to the, the other part.
Okay.
What are we, what are we putting in there?
That vinyl tile.
No, no, I mean, who, who, who are we moving into, how are we moving?
Public, prob- not, not sure.
Court department or something else, or?
Not sure how we're gonna do it, but Public Works moving back downstairs, so they're gonna be on one side or the other.
Got it.
Alright, need a motion to, to approve lowest and best quote for purchase and installation of new floorboard and carpet interiors on the first floor, city hall in amount of four thousand four hundred eighty seven dollars and ninety cents?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Reed?
Second.
Second, Mr. Salvo, any discussion? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passed six zero, Mr. No Block is out the room. Alright, next thing on the, da, 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 minutes?
Uh, we need to do that, um.
Oh, yeah, add on, so if somebody can read that.
Uh, motion to authorize the administration to write two checks from the utility operating capital expense account to fasten all. Uh, Wheels Inc. for the purchase of two twenty nineteen Dodge Ram fifteen hundred and four by two tradesman trucks. That the council approved on March nineteenth, twenty twenty four, not to exceed thirty seven thousand thirty dollars.
Alright, motion, Mr. Salvo?
Second.
Discussion, uh, where's the funds coming from?
Utility.
Utility.
That's correct, yeah, okay.
Alright, motion, Mr. Salvo, second, Mr. Hoffman, any more discussion, any more discussion? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion passed seven zero.